It's okay.
Okay, we are live.
Okay, we're ready. I would like to first of all, thank everyone for this opportunity for me to serve as the Chair of the Student Support. Any of you who know my history as a principal, that was something we worked really hard at, making sure we worked to do whatever we needed to make kids successful. So I look forward to the feedback from my colleagues on the board and from Madam President, and I think that we're off to a good start. I would like to introduce the Superintendent who expressed interest in presenting the first topic, a very important topic of parent involvement, and I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman. Congratulations to you. And tonight, we're going to hear from Chief Dr. Ramona Reynolds and some of her team. She's been doing a lot of work and some innovative things to increase the amount of parent engagement that we have in schools. And I know that we all know and we all agree that when our parents are engaged, that, you know, we see test scores raised, we see better attendance, we see children who are more socially acclimated, and so it's a win-win. You know, better communication and all of those things happen when we have increased parent engagement. So I'm going to turn things over to Chief Dr. Reynolds so that she can introduce her team and begin the presentation. And hello to all of the Board members and colleagues.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much, Dr. Williams. Admire, would you please advance the presentation? The PowerPoint presentation?
Right now.
I mean, while he's doing that, I can go ahead and get... Oh, there we go. So, good evening once again, and Happy New Years. Happy New Year to our distinguished Board President, prestigious Board members, impressive Superintendent, revered families, praiseworthy community, awe-inspiring students, and admirable BPS colleagues who are viewing. Thank you for an opportunity to spotlight just some of the district's family engagement efforts this year. Advance the slide. We recognize that parent and family engagement, as Dr. Williams said, is the secret sauce to supporting student success. As such, it is imperative, as outlined in our education bargain, that we renew our relationships with students and families and fortify our relationships with community. Advance the slide. Though a great amount of effort is focused on cultivating trust and enhancing partnerships with families, the work we do with and on behalf of families is impacted in some way by each of the five goals that we will fulfill by 2025. Advance. And we know that it's an extraordinarily heavy lift in attempting to effectively engage and support the over 30,000 families in our district. Almost every department and certainly every school in our district interfaces with families. The Office of Parent and Family Engagement is a department leading this work, and I am extremely proud of the efforts of this extraordinarily dedicated, diligent, and hard-working team that includes Acting Director Amy Casillas Osorio, Supervisor Jennifer Rich, Community Resource Leader James Jimmy Burns, Community Resource Leader Travell Skals, Community Education Leader Shyla Early, Parent Advocate Joe Agro, and Principal Clerk Colette Clemmons. This small, dynamic team collaborates and co-plans with many departments, community organizations, and parent groups, and is well on its way with moving family engagement to the next level. So please help me welcome Mrs. Casillas Osorio and Mrs. Jennifer Rich.
Dr. Reynolds, good evening, esteemed Board Members and Superintendent Dr. Williams. I am Amy Casillas Osorio, Acting Director of the Office of Parent and Family Engagement, joined today by Supervisor Jennifer Rich. Thank you for providing us with this time to present some highlights of the amazing work that we conduct on behalf of BPS families. Next slide, please. For dozens of years, our district has conducted parent engagement work but never had consistent definition. As such, in 2020, the Office of Parent and Family Engagement convened a diverse committee of parents, administrators, teachers, and community members who embodies a collective spirit and arrived at the following definition: The BPS Parent and Family Engagement Definition: Active Voice, Involvement and Presence of Parents, Families, and Community Members Working with All in School, Home, and/or Community to Ensure Ongoing Student Learning, Wellness, and Development. Voice: Ensuring that the voices of all families are amplified to cultivate trust aligns with our BPS Strategic Plan. Involvement and Presence does not just mean showing up in person, it also supports learning at home and throughout the community. Depending on individual family circumstances, involvement and presence may also include other family members and other trusted adults. Other ways that parents might engage could be text messages, emails, messages sent home or to school with students, and involving their students or their children in community sports groups supports wellness and development. Next slide, please. As many of you are aware, we have made a significant investment of time and money in strengthening parent, family, and community engagement throughout Buffalo Public Schools. The Office of Parent and Family Engagement has partnered with High Expectations, a small but mighty company similar to our OPFE team, to provide training on Dr. Karen MAPS Dual Capacity Building Framework for Family-School Partnerships. The commitments under Goals 4 and 5 in the 2225 BPS Strategic Plan are strongly supported within our implementation of the Dual Capacity Building Framework. Identifying and implementing a parent and family engagement framework is an action item under Priority 5 in the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. Looking at Pillar 4 of the Framework, it highlights how parent engagement is linked to learning, as schools align their parent engagement activities and events to the academic goals of their schools. An example there, how teacher conferences are being revamped to include a learning activity, family activity nights, whether they're fun activities, are including learning activities and a takeaway that parents could take home to support student learning at home. Empowering families as co-creators and advocates, including them in the decision-making process, such as the SBMT meetings, the parent engagement planning, school events, whatever the school offers, parents, involving them, making sure that they're part of the process. Every single school throughout our district had representation at the two-day in-person Family Engagement Learning Institute, including a two-day session for district-level staff with representatives from almost every department. Participants were provided with valuable resources and strategies to enhance relationships with families. Schools are now participating in virtual coaching sessions with high expectations and OPFE to support their ongoing family engagement work. OPFE is leading a district family engagement team to ensure we strengthen the organizational conditions of the Dual Capacity Building Framework. We just had our first meeting on Monday. There was a great turnout, including the departments who attended the institute, and a number of additional departments, as well as building-level administrators. They all heard great reviews from their peers. It was encouraging to hear them affirm how OPFE is already collaborating throughout the district. Next slide, please. This is some of the feedback received. 168 out of the 177 participants that included families, administrators, teachers, and community members, community partners, completed an electronic survey after completing their two-day session of the Family Engagement Learning Institute. 96% felt confident in their ability to develop a family engagement action plan using a cycle of inquiry, that is utilizing data to drive their planning. 98% feel confident in their ability to engage families in ways that will lead to improved relationships, establishing trusting relationships between families and school is critical to the success of students. 97% feel confident in their ability to engage families in ways that will lead to improved student achievement. During the institute, school teams identified many of the wonderful events they had planned for the year. These events were strong in building relationships but not as much linked to learning. The strategies learned during the Family Engagement Learning Institute provided the teams with the resources necessary to link their family engagement events to the academic goals of the school and to the hopes and dreams that families have for their children. This survey provided important feedback that has been guiding individual coaching sessions with buildings. These sessions are being held virtually via Zoom with high expectations and a member of OPFE. Schools are following up on the work they started in the institute, ensuring that the work that they have started is successfully completed. Our meeting with School 54 just last week was extremely productive. Their family engagement team was able to identify specific and actionable ways to support Lexia usage at home by providing additional training and support to families using the QR code to log in. These are some encouraging data points as we continue to move forward with implementing the Dual Capacity Building Framework in Buffalo Public Schools. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, during the two-day sessions that took place in November through December, school teams collaborated to identify the strengths of their families and school communities. Here are a couple of photos of school teams collaborating on their plans. These don't even capture the electrifying energy that exuded throughout the sessions. We are extremely proud of the work being done to strengthen family engagement in Buffalo Public Schools. And now we would like to share a video highlighting the key takeaways from our final day of the institute.
Video, please.
The video, Amy? Yep, just a second.
Yes.
So pleased that the Office of Parent and Family Engagement in the Buffalo Public Schools has wrapped our final day of our Family Engagement Learning Institute with national consultant High Expectations. We're moving to a place of where we're no longer engaging families in isolation. We want to make sure that we are linking our engagement to learning to provide our school staff, our families, and our district staff with the needed resources to support our student learning and school and beyond. I was really excited to come into this district where we brought administrators and teachers, community partners, families together at one table to think through how can we tweak and repurpose our family engagement strategies so that they lead to increased achievement, they lead to increased relationship with families? That was really the work that we were doing. And one of the highlights was the high school teams. You know, people say high school folks don't really get family engagement work, and they're not excited, and it's so much easier to work with elementary, and the elementary teams were amazing. But those high school folks came in charged and ready to go and serious about thinking about how they were going to deepen relationships with families. They had so much energy, and it was amazing. It was a highlight of the week. My key takeaway from this Parent Engagement Framework Institute is to bridge the gap between families, staff, and students. We need to want to hear everyone's voice and try to understand where everyone's coming from. One key takeaway that I'm going to go back to the schools and talk to the families, talk to the students, I want to know what their goals are. I want to know what their goals are for their kids, and we need to aggregate their goals and what our goals are. Talk to them, how their, like you said, staff, students, talk to parents, and know what we're going to do as a team, collaborate. Absolutely. Thank you.
I've got a table setting because everyone should be on the table.
Thank you so much to all who participated. We hope that you found the value in what we've learned, and we are looking forward to taking our family engagement practices to the next level.
One voice, one vision, one mission, next level! One voice, one vision, one mission, next level! One voice, one vision, one mission, next level!
Thank you, Admire. Both our videos, as well as many other resources of information, are available on our BPS Parent Centers Facebook page, as well as on the Office of Parent and Family Engagement Facebook page. Supervisor Jennifer Rich will now share information regarding our support to buildings with Title I, parent engagement liaisons, and parent centers.
Thank you, Mrs. Casillas Osorio. And then, Admire, if you could pull the presentation back up there for us. And we are on Slide 9. Thank you. Another important ingredient in strengthening family engagement that our department provides is supporting schools as they utilize their Title I allocations for parent and family engagement. We offer trainings for administrators in June through August and follow-up throughout the year with any new administrators taking the lead on family engagement for their building. Training includes an overview of requirements under ESSA Section 1116, which provides guidance and regulations for Title I parent and family, parent, family, and community engagement. Administrators learn about what is required for their school compact, policy, and what are allowable expenditures under Title I. We also have some fun. This year, we were able to do the training in person again, and it was so encouraging to observe administrators collaborating and sharing ideas for meaningful family engagement events. Elementary administrators were collaborating with high school administrators to share ideas and resources that were focused on preparing students and their families for the transitions in their educational journeys. OSA teamed up with OPFE to support administrators and their teams as they align their parent engagement planning to their sub for the School Comprehensive Education Plan. This year, Director Bradley Behringer and Supervisor Abigail Wolfski joined us to provide a presentation and support during our in-person administrator training. They also joined us for our virtual follow-up sessions for anyone that missed the in-person training. Every building has scheduled one-on-one meetings that had started in August and are ongoing to present day to review planning requirements. We also provide presentations and trainings for school staff, like staff meetings we get invited to, as well as SBMT meetings. Follow-up coaching sessions are provided throughout the school year as buildings work to plan events and ensure families have all the resources they need to support continued learning at home. Next slide, please. Now, our parent engagement liaisons, or PELs, are hired to enhance the engagement for our parents and support the success of our children, so really they're that critical bridge between our families, the schools, and even within the community. This year, we took our PEL program to the next level by offering our PELs up to 40 hours a month at a rate of $15 per hour. Previously, it was 30 hours per month at minimum wage, $13.20 an hour. We currently have 52 PELs with 39 returning. This is a significant increase from last year at this time where we had 35 PELs. Offering more hours and an increase in pay provided additional incentives for potential PELs who are using this job as their only source of income. And as you see, we've got 59 out of 60 schools with PELs. We do have PELs that work at two schools. They either have children at both schools or community connections. When we look at our PEL engagement data, we are seeing a significant increase in the face-to-face work, which is really encouraging, showing that our PELs are in the building. They're there at pickup, drop-off. They're making those connections with families. They're that familiar face when families drop off kids, pick up kids. They're also offering coffee hours, informational sessions in their parent rooms. We see another 27.6% of engagements involved in other, and that's really the SBMT meetings, their PEL professional developments, the disproportionality trainings, and other parent group meetings. The other part of our PEL engagement is really that critical outreach piece where our PELs are personally calling families within the schools, sending text messages, sending emails, ensuring those families have all the information necessary to be encouraged to participate in those SBMT meetings, our district meetings, providing all of that information to make sure that it's getting shared as often as possible. Some of our PELs this year, I mean, all of them, really doing amazing things. We have Ms. Mitchell over at School 84. She was able to get gifts for all of the children for Christmas and the other holidays, and she actually was able to get additional gifts so that the students had a little store that they were able to shop at for gifts for their families. They were able to practice some math skills then as well. We have Grandma Vera over at School 82, who has an amazing supply of clothes donated, shoes donated. When I went over there to visit, there were at least three teachers that stopped by with donations, and that's just a regular day for her. We have also increased those professional development opportunities for our parent engagement liaisons. And during our October PD, the BPS Strategic Plan was introduced. PELs received copies and worked in groups to brainstorm ideas on how they can support the Five by 2025 in their role as a parent engagement liaison. As I said before, our PELs this year are truly rock stars and continue to go above and beyond to support the homeschool connection. Next slide, please. Our parent centers are another resource we provide for families and community members within the Buffalo Public Schools. We partner with Say Yes to bring valuable programming and resources to our four in-person locations. We have Bennett High School in the Northeast Zone, Lafayette High School in the West Zone, East High School in the East Zone, and South Park High School in the South Zone. Now, participating in parent center programming is not contingent on where you live in the city. Anyone can attend any event at the four locations. If you live near South Park High School, but there's something at Bennett that you are interested in, by all means, please attend. And then we also have our virtual platform, as previously mentioned, the BPS Parent Centers Facebook page. Through Say Yes, parent center liaisons are hired to support our efforts in identifying community partners who can bring valuable classes and information to families. Classes this year began in September, and as of today, January 11th, 2023, we have held 60 individual sessions. And when we take a look at the data on the slides, we have our offering broken down by our parent center strands, that parent leadership and advocacy, academic and instructional technology, personal and professional growth and development, family bonding, social emotional wellness. This year, we've been looking at a lot of our parent leadership and advocacy and the academic instructional technology. As we move into the second half of the year, there's another focus on our social emotional wellness. Looking at the attendance, probably see we've got a big chunk identifying as community members. We have 51.5% identifying as a community member, with 14.4% identifying as parents. What we've observed is that many parents were signing in as a community member if their child did not attend the school where the parent center was located. But community members also encompass our grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, neighbors, siblings, the true village involved in the success of our students in BPS. However, our team is still working on clarifying the sign-in process so families understand that parent means any parent of a child in BPS. Some of the examples of programming that we've been offering: Deaf access services. They've provided ASL, American Sign Language interpreter services in BPS for years. In response to the needs of our families and community members, we took that partnership to the next level by contracting with Deaf access services to provide beginner American Sign Language classes to our families. ASL, or American Sign Language, is the third most commonly used language in the United States after English and Spanish. ASL is also a critical tool in supporting children who are non-verbal to provide a communication resource and reduce frustration. One of our families in our November cohort included a young girl around 10 and her mother. Her mother shared feedback at the end of the course stating that her daughter had never verbally said "I love you." But after participating in this course, her daughter started signing "I love you." In partnership with Say Yes and Epic, Strong African-American Families, which was brought in as a program, and this provided differentiated lessons for parents and their children. They were brought together at the end to share their learnings. We also have partnered with Student Support Services to provide the Collective Care Cafes monthly. These are virtual closed sessions to anyone who wants to join. Strategies for self-care and resources for families and BPS staff to support the emotional well-being are offered. We have collaborated with OSA and community schools to house our data in one space through Group Trail. This will allow us to accurately collect attendance data and support meaningful program planning. Currently, our offerings such as ASL and Strong African-American Families that are geared towards the family participation have had the larger turnout as opposed to classes focused singularly on the parent or family member. Surveys have been developed to collect feedback from families regarding future programming they would find beneficial. The PELs are instrumental in sharing these surveys with families in their building, and this is included in some of that outreach. We have some upcoming programs: Bright Minds, we have an Intro to Life Coaching, there's going to be a partnership with Cornell Cooperative Extension for cooking classes, Infant CPR, and the American Sign Language classes do return in March for five weeks and again in May for five weeks, with many, many more offerings to come. Please make sure to keep an eye on that BPS Parent Centers Facebook page if you don't already follow it. Great resource, but also our Parent Engagement Department District page has the calendar events that you'll be able to follow. But I will turn it back to Mrs. Casillas Osorio to discuss additional supports provided by OPFE. Next slide, please.
You're speaking, Mrs. Osorio. You're muted. Unmute?
Sorry about that. No problem. Yes. As many of you know, under the BPS District Parent and Family Engagement Policy 3170, parents are provided with opportunities to participate at the district level. The purpose of Parent Congress is to serve as the liaison between the district and our families. They disseminate important district information to families and to provide parental feedback to the district. They also encourage families to engage within their organizations. Parent Congress is currently comprised of six board-recognized parent groups, each with its own mission. The current groups are BPTO, DPCC, MVP, MEAC, CHW, and CPAC. Parent Congress meets monthly as a collective in addition to monthly meetings with the Superintendent. The latest update to our District Parent and Family Engagement Policy, Board of Education Policy 3170, requires parent congress groups to recertify annually. We will begin this process in April. Scan the QR code at the top of the page to access our calendar of parent center offerings as well as parent congress meetings. Next slide, please. These are some additional supports that OPFE offers. These are some additional supports that OPFE offers for families. We are very excited to announce that we return in person for our annual Parent, Family, and Community Engagement Summit, taking place over two days with an award ceremony in the evening of Tuesday, May 30th, in the Bennett High School auditorium, and a day of celebration and learning on Saturday, June 3rd, at All High Stadium. We also have our BPS Information Hub. That's a one-stop location where families can get answers to questions that, when they don't know who to contact. Our parent advocate, Joe Agro, provides supports to families with resolving concerns. And then again, our BPS Parent Centers and Office of Parent and Family Engagement Facebook pages has over 11,000 followers. That's where we promote our parent center offerings and sessions, where we share community resources as well as strategies to support families. In partnership with staff development, next slide, please. In partnership with staff development, we have launched a new literacy promotion where weekly literacy strategies are also posted on our Facebook page. We are also collaborating on a video highlighting these strategies in action. Our PEL from number 302 is participating in this project. So once again, I moved the slide a little quickly, but if you scan the QR code, you can access our BPS Parent Centers Facebook page. And please note that if you are on the BPS Wi-Fi or Internet, the link will not open. So we have highlighted many opportunities that our department provides, and we collaborate with departments throughout the district to meet the needs of all families. But as we know, families are their child's first teacher, and that doesn't stop when they enter school. We need families to do their part so we can achieve 5x25. Here are some ways to address our focus areas of improvement. To increase attendance, ensure your child attends school on time every day. Monitor daily in-class attendance through the parent portal. Utilize the support within BPS, such as the student support team, parent center classes. And also to reduce suspensions, have those conversations with your children about expected behaviors and ask how they are doing. Be proactive communicating with school, keeping those lines of communication, which lead to building trusting relationships. And again, utilizing the support within BPS. And these are just a few highlights of the work and supports that we provide. Thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Do you have any questions for us at this time?
I will go around and give everyone an opportunity if that's probably the best way to do it. Madam President, do you have any questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. I guess I do and I don't. I'm not quite sure. But I appreciate the presentation. I guess in trying to move forward, what I'm trying to find out, I have a question. Like, when we brought up the parent congress piece, what percentage of the parent congress consists of parents that are currently with students in our district? These are the things that I sort of need to know because I need to know if we are, who is who, who is whom in our district? And so I'm curious to know. You said that there is a recertification process that happens in the spring. And I'm going to reacquaint myself with the guidelines, but I need to know who's whom in this district. How many of the parents, how many people who are registered with the parent congress are actually parents? How many are teachers? How many are community members? I think in order for us to service our customers, our parents, that we need to know. The other thing I'm interested in knowing is how does having a parent liaison, an engagement liaison in our building, impact us as far as student, parent, or teacher and student conferences or engagement? I saw that you said that you gave, you know, under ideas to reduce suspensions. Do we spell out for parents what it looks like to be engaged with the teacher? You know, it's one thing to say, stay in communication with the teacher or open up communication, but do we open it up? What are the steps to open it up? I'm a parent. I didn't do good in school. Okay, I didn't have a good relationship. And my experience is not positive. How do I go about having that? Do we spell that out in some sort of procedural way for people to know some basic navigating tools? And those are the things that come up to, I mean, just come to my attention. It's just like, what are we, are we making sure that we're meeting our customer where they are? Okay, and that's what I'm concerned with. When we are talking, do we say, do we talk in layman's talk? Or do we talk in education jargon? I need to know that that's happening with our parents. The other thing, and I'll get off of this, and then you can, in the future, Terry, I don't really want to be the leader of stuff or talking, but because I don't want it to sound, you know, I want to have everyone else's opinion, and if they don't pick up something, I'd like to add mine. But the other thing I'm concerned with is the uniformity that we need to get in place for the best practices with parent liaisons. We have some parent liaisons that's knocking it out of the park, and we have some that are not. And I feel that we need to have some basic expectations. We can say benchmarks that we expect all parent liaisons to be doing. Okay, and that includes having each principal, in my opinion, with their own student, with their own parent-student group inside the building. But I need to make sure that we don't have willy-nillies and everybody doing what they want to do, and that we're not achieving certain things. Because I would think the ultimate goal with parent engagement is parent involvement, and that includes everybody at least being able to measure. Because if we're doing SMART goals, they're measurable. So that's where I'm at. I appreciate the work that's been done. This department has come a long way. But I don't feel where we are, where we need to be, and it's no reflection on this department. It goes back to over 20-something years of people advocating for, quote, "parents" with no parents being involved. So you had all these big voices, but yet no one trickled down to the actual school buildings and had parents involved. And as a result of that, our parent engagement suffered. Since Dr. Reynolds has been in there, she's improved it tremendously. I appreciate the work that you and our staff are doing, Dr. Williams. But we still have a long way to go because we have a whole generation that never was involved in parent engagement. I think it stopped probably around the year that my kids were graduating. Because yes, all these big voices, and we still have the big voices. And when we look to see what the parent involvement is, do we see parent involvement, or do we see their point? So I'm just curious to know, the nitty-gritty stuff. Who's whom? What are we doing? I mean, how are we making sure that the best practices are being done? And I'm big on procedures, and that comes from my corporate background. I want to make sure that there's like, all the parent liaisons are at least doing X amount of things consistently throughout this district. And I don't want to hold them down trying to pigeonhole them into doing anything. I'm trying to make sure that we can at least expect that if a parent leaves and goes, another parent can step in and say, "These are the things that the board expects for me to do, and these are the things that I'm doing." But we've come a long way with this department, and I'm pleased to see the growth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Evans-Brown?
Hello, everyone. I've always admired this department under Dr. Reynolds. They do an excellent job, and I've been to some of the summits in the past. But what Sharon was saying is kind of correct because I remember, it probably goes beyond 20, 30 years when my kids were in school. Parents weren't welcome, for example. And so I remember, my kid was a kindergartner, and I overheard a teacher, and it has changed a lot, so thank you for that, say, "Oh, now we have to be involved with parents." But research shows that when parents are involved, kids are more successful. And so when we talk about taking it to the next level, it would be interesting to see, you know, more regular parents participate in some of these groups. And for them to understand the importance of being involved, you know, in their child's education. And not saying that it's not happening, but we could do better. So, you know, for any doctoral student, it would be interesting for them to look at the parallel with parent involvement in some of the initiatives that you cited today. Because it would be nice to know if we're having an impact on student educational proficiencies, you know, with all of the deliverables that you produce today. So those are my just observations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Terry. I do have a couple of questions. But first, I'd like to thank Dr. Motte Reynolds, Amy Calisofero, and Jennifer Rich for putting together a great presentation and advising our community, the board, and the district about our goals and what we're doing with our parent engagement and how we are using parent engagement in the city of Buffalo. It's very enlightening just to hear this presentation. And I do have a couple of questions pertaining to it. The first question, let's go one at a time, is your parent engagement liaison. Could you give a little description about how somebody can become a parent engagement liaison? I did get a couple of text messages about that, and you know, what do it assist of, and how can people participate in it?
Okay, I can answer that. We have our, so to be a parent engagement liaison, we did expand what could qualify for a parent engagement liaison. Previously was, you had to be a parent of a child in that building. We weren't necessarily getting as many candidates, so we expanded it to involve community member if there was not a parent available. They also need to have a high school diploma or equivalency. And then, once we get that information, the administrator provides us with a form, and we can always give that information. We can share that. It's also available on our department page. But the administrator then sends us the information. The potential candidate would be interviewed by the building administrator and one of the members of our team. If that all goes well, we send their information on to our partner, 22nd Century, who performs a background check. So they go through a seven-year background check clearance with them. And then they would also have to complete the onboarding paperwork with 22nd Century before being fully cleared to be an active PEL.
Okay, how long does that process normally takes?
So it can take from one day to one week. We give them a two-week window. If they don't complete the paperwork within two weeks, then we have to move on because, again, we are looking to tighten this program up, and we do know that we need to keep this work moving forward. So what we have been doing with parent engagement liaisons and potential PELs, because sometimes that paperwork, or getting these emails, or you're getting them from 22nd Century, it's an unfamiliar email. We provide support, so I have the PELs come in and meet one-on-one in my office, even print out the paperwork, so we could get them cleared within two to three days.
Okay, great, great. Are you able to walk a person through this process?
Yep.
Okay, great. And going from 35 PELs last year to 52 this year, and with that type of incline growing, you know, I think that we can just go a long ways, especially with this position. Now, is this a volunteer position?
So they are paid. I mean, so it's 40 hours, up to 40 hours a month at $15 an hour.
Okay, great. It's great information for stakeholders.
Yep, and a key, sorry, and I don't think I mentioned this before, I'm sorry, not a Buffalo public school employee. So we can't have like teacher aides or assistants because that is often the question, but it does have to be a non-Buffalo public school employee.
What if it was a bus aide employed by the bus company or the district?
No, so unfortunately, because we partner with, so any partner corporate or partner vendor, anybody that's paid somehow even through a third-party vendor from Buffalo, we can't, because it's still kind of a double dip.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Thank you for the information. And seeing that you offered it for high schools, Bennett, Lafayette, East, and South Park, are any expansion with those high schools or other high schools areas? Or are we going to keep those four high schools stationary?
No, so that's actually a great question, Board Member Hurd, because that has been a conversation that we've been having, not necessarily to add additional hubs, but we have had talks about pop-up parent centers where we will bring the programming to. Because again, they are spaced out, and we know this is a big city, and we know transportation is a concern. So how do we meet our families and communities where they are? So we have been offering pop-up parent centers, and we, so that's still, that's a work in progress. We really started that this year. We haven't had necessarily a full one come to fruition, but we're getting there. So that, excellent, and that is the work that we are.
And I'll just interject. This is before your arrival, Mrs. Rich. We, prior to the pandemic, we offered numerous parent center pop-ups. And we also offered them in other schools other than the four that are currently housing our parent centers.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, are you done, Mr. Hurd?
Go ahead.
I wanted to circle back to some of the points that President Cotman brought up. First of all, let's go back to the first question regarding the Board of Education Policy 3170. That recertification that's going to take place in April is going to look at all those points that you did mention, and that is a new addition, that was as of July 2021, I believe it was. Dr. Reynolds, China, yes.
Correct.
So that, yeah, so that process will start for the first time now, this April. And then another point regarding the PEL data. So the Group Trail data suite that we referred to earlier, that houses our data in one space, that's also a new initiative that was started because there was a need to look and gather parent engagement data from all the different areas. For example, the parent centers, the community schools' parent engagement data, as well as any other parent engagements that are taking place throughout the district. PEL activities, robo calls, for example. You wouldn't even think to add that, but even that is being added. The suite is still being developed. And even the responses that parents are providing through robo calls as well as our parent information hub are going to be included there to continue to look at the data as far as how parents are being engaged. And again, you know, as we continue to step up and to bring in new partnerships and new programs, we are looking, you know, at the data to, and also based on parent feedback. What are their needs? What would they like, what are they interested in being provided with? So, you know, it's a work in progress.
Let me just interject also, just to, in harmony with Board President Cotman's question. She mentioned a SMART goal, and she mentioned the standardization of the work that the PELs are doing. So I did want to lift up one of the Office of Parent and Family Engagement Department goals that align explicitly with our strategic plan. So there is a standard expectation that all PELs, no matter who you are, will be required to provide information and resources, conduct daily outreach to parents, families, staff, community members. They can do that a number of ways. Recruiting at least 33% of their school families. school families to participate in school-based activities, events, and attend at least one monthly Saturday Academy or Parent Center offering. And so this progress is monitored and measured through bi-weekly reports provided to the Office of Parent and Family Engagement by way of 22nd Century technology. So this is data that the team is continuously monitoring, assessing, and they're recalibrating and having those individual conversations and coaching sessions with our PELs when needed. Again, it's a work in progress, but the goal, the SMART goal, is established. Thanks.
Okay, Cindy?
You covered where I was heading, but thank you.
One more question. Maybe talking about learning from home, student learning from home, how does the PEL works with children learning from home?
Do you, I can, I mean, our PELs, so when they do their wellness checks and these calls to families, so they know if families have students at home or if they're being homeschooled, if they're home for an extended illness, this is information that is communicated without, you know, full information because we do respect HIPAA guidelines. But they reach out, they can coordinate with the student's teacher to help support with making sure assignments are there, they're calling home, they're talking to the teacher, they're in the buildings. So that really does make a difference to have the PEL in the building because they do make that quick connect, yep.
And they're also, I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, team, because I actually said I was going to remain hidden.
It's in your blood.
I'm trying to help to support. The team mentioned the weekly family literacy strategies that are being shared, and you can view it on the Parent Center and Office of Parent and Family Engagement Facebook pages every Monday morning. The PELs also share those with their families. So those are strategies that they're able to just very easily do at home with their kids.
The reason I asked that was because I'm just concerned about children that suspended and extra helps for those individuals, and how can we reach out to those families for children that are struggling and may have, you know, been removed from school because of, because of some contrary to our code of conduct.
Well, I think, you know, our parent center offerings, that's a great opportunity, depending upon the reason why that child has been suspended, particularly if it's a student who is repeatedly suspended. You know, this might be an opportunity to really get to the root cause. So, I don't know, let's just say that a kid is continuously suspended because he is being disrespectful towards school staff. There are, in instances like that, we would encourage families, participate in the session that one of our board-recognized parent groups, Most Valuable Parents, they provide, what is it called, parent-to-parent?
Yep, parent-to-parent.
Parent-to-parent sessions where they have real deal parent-to-parent conversations and training sessions. Many of the members of Most Valuable Parents and many of the participants in those sessions have experienced kids being suspended. So that's almost like a support group for them. So that is an opportunity and an example of the sort of support that we can provide to families of suspended kids.
And also, these are resources, for example, when we have our PEL professional development, these are all resources and information that we do share with the PELs, and they turnkey this information to the families at their building. And then we also bring in presenters, we collaborate with other departments such as the Wellness, Health and Wellness Department. And so there's a lot of professional development that's provided to the PELs that equips them with skills that they turn around, they share with the parents in the schools, they can hold meetings with them, you know, and turnkey that information. So they're very effective at doing that type of work.
And we do, sorry, just as you speak to the PEL PD, so previously mentioned the collective care cafes, our PELs attend those. So whenever we have those, they are learning the restorative practices, they are learning talking points to support families with those difficult conversations at home when you do see increased behaviors to get to that root cause. And honestly, when we hear that, Board Member Hurd, because this is a concern that we know we want to reduce those suspensions, and we want to provide supports for those that do get suspended. So the literacy tips, there's also a video component, but that's something we're looking at building on. But again, we're really, you know, we say, it's a new day, it's, this is day one, and to move it to the next level, we need to do this in a sustainable way. So we're really just getting things going here, but we know it's very critical work.
I'd like to thank you, thank you again, and it was just on reflection because of we're doing such great work and there's kids that's being left behind that is suspended, not by the fault of the district, but, you know, reaching those homes. So thank you for the work that you're doing. I know it's a work in progress and I congratulate this department for the work they're doing. Thank you, Mrs. Suda.
Thank you. Cindy, you have anything?
I do not, other than thank you so much, each of you, for thorough presentations and entertaining our questions very thoughtfully as well. So things that were popping in my head have been asked, you've been answering, and I've been taking notes. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. McCosley?
Chairwoman Suda, so I just want to, I do have a question, but I do want to state, one of the main reasons that I'm on this board and what brought me to just this work was advocating for my children and transparency and communication to the community. And the strides that have been made, not because of, you know, since I've been on the board, but not because of me and not because of board members, but because of this department and how it's, you know, just expanded and all the work that you've done, Dr. Reynolds, and everybody involved, I can tell you, we are miles away from where we were when I was at the other side screaming for my 2 minutes and 45 seconds and making sure people hear, when I wasn't communicated about things just happening in my own children's school. So I want to put out there that this is just amazing work that's been happening over the past however long, and it's growing, and I'm just appreciative of all this, it was a great presentation. I do want to ask a question around something that's, you know, anybody who's been on, you know, around me long enough to know is, we have so many folks who are literally the front-facing folks with our students on a daily that aren't just parents. So when we're doing this family communication, when we're talking about family and parent engagement, do we or have we put on the table, like, if you, any support systems, if you're a grandparent who happens to be taking care of your, you know, I mean, taking care of children, or are you an aunt or an uncle, are you someone who, you know, has now has inherited a beautiful student that you're now taking care of? Do we have any support systems in any of our parent centers or anything around that? Because it's still, to me, a concern as, I'll be honest with you, I still get these remarks that it's almost like people feel as if they're not being respected when they know that there's so many people playing the role of parents, but they're not actually parents and they don't feel as supported because some folks' technology is not where they're at. So how can we reach out to them? So I'm just wondering if in the near future, if we have this, and I've just missed, you know, I want to be able to advocate for that. And then also, just making sure that we have everything at the ready, board members, to be able to say, okay, these are our groups, I mean, I'm pushing the community schools and all of the parent and family engagements. When it comes to Parent Congress and organizations, though, there's a little bit of a disconnect as to, you know, we have the RFPQ around if you want to work with the Buffalo Public Schools and partner with them, and then there's, do you want to be a part of Parent Congress? So I think that those two avenues have to be a little more succinct. I don't know if they go to the Parent Congress, to the website under Parent Congress to see if their organization might qualify or how to sign up to be a part of Parent Congress, as opposed to like groups that involve parents who want to be involved in working with the district and partnering with the district. I know of two different organizations that really would like to be involved in Parent Congress, but they keep kind of pushed into working with the district as a CBO with the district. So I don't know if that makes sense, but that's a concern that was brought to my attention. So all of that, and I'm done now.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would just like to touch real quickly on one of the points, one of the questions, when you asked about the grandparents. So a lot of the programming that is offered through parent centers is geared to parents and caregivers. For example, we are currently, there's a couple of sessions coming up, it's called UB's Brain Train, Keeping Your Brain Healthy, and it's for population 50 and above. And then, mental health for parents and caregivers. So we really, you know, cover all the ages because we do realize that many of our students are being raised by their grandparents or some other adult, you know, it could be a relative or even just some friend of the family. So yes, we do try our best to provide that type of programming. Again, each semester, let's call it, we have winter, spring, and then fall and summer as well. So, you know, depending on the needed hand, but yes, we do try to cover all those populations. But of course, we continue to advance the work, we will be looking for more opportunities to provide, you know, even more programming gear for that concern.
But Mrs. Ozorio, let's just lift up, though, everything, absolutely, every offering through our parent centers is open to all. So it's not just for parents, it's for parents, caregivers, aunties, mamas, malas.
Yes. Well, and Dr. Reynolds, going back to the data that we had, does demonstrate that the majority are responding as a community member. And we are seeing that. Board Member McCosley, we do hear you, and in some of that, like clarification and communication and transparency, when we are promoting, we do say families, and we can further define what family, because that's really also the work that we're doing. So, you know, grandma, grandpa, aunt, neighbor, if this applies, if you work with, you know, Johnny comes over to be babysat by the neighbor, but you want to know how to help with the homework, come to this class. This is what, so that's part of the survey feedback we're also looking to get from our families and community members that should be coming out in the next couple of weeks as we further plan our programming.
Okay, we're going to move along.
Thank you so much, I'll make sure I pass that along.
Okay, Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Chairwoman Suda. I just have a couple of quick comments. First, thank you to the president, for the presentation, Dr. Reynolds, Mrs. Casillas Ozorio, and Ms. Rich. Similar to what Mrs. McCosley mentioned, I think when we talk about the Office of Parent and Family Engagement, we get a presentation that's kind of on the macro level. And today, for the first time since before I was even on the board, we got into a little bit more of the micro level that we haven't heard about in the past. So I commend you on that, that training, from what I've seen and heard, seemed genuine, seemed impactful. Dr. Reynolds knows that I had questions about that contract, and I think President Belton Kotman is rubbing off on me. When we're spending a good amount of money, I want to be sure it's going to deliver. And it appears as if that, in this case, it has. So I commend you that. And what I noticed is that, which we, I don't think commonly do, the training was parents, teachers, administrators, staff, together in collaboration. Usually, we train on parent engagement, but it's in isolation. So it's really, I think, refreshing to see that everybody was in the same room doing that training together. To the point of attendance, even if, as it was just mentioned, if we have community members that are not directly affiliated with BPS and they're accessing our community schools, our parent centers, I think that kind of speaks to how schools are the hubs of our communities and is a great example of the impact of our strong community schools. And my opinion is, is if we have community members that are being served by our parent centers, by our community schools, then in some way, our families and our students are being served as well. Lastly, the QR codes, and this is more of, I think, an IT issue. I tried to look, access it on my phone, and when we have an alert for a board meeting on our website, it does not take you directly to that page. And for, unless it's just my phone, I'm not able to get that alert off and then go to the page. And I bring this up because it's also a problem when I go to our Saturday Academies and I use the QR code to sign in, I have the same problem. And I just, I think it needs to be corrected because I want to make sure we are getting account of everybody that's attending our Saturday Academies and parent centers, any activities, because we know that numbers drive the funding that we get for our strong community schools. So if that could be looked into and addressed, I think it's important that we do that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Board Member Scott. Sorry, just to the QR code, when I tested it out, it is harder to turn that alert off. So once you do get through it, you get to the calendar, but we can share those links directly, you know, afterwards.
Dr. Rivera?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions. I think my colleagues have done an excellent job in talking about the quality of the presentation as well as targeting some questions. My, mine is simply a request that as you continue to look for opportunities and you look for to expand this excellent kind of programming, is to think in two directions. One, what kind of specific programming can you do for support for our parents and students with disabilities?
Till we get Dr. Rivera back, Ms. Woods?
I also wanted to thank Dr. Reynolds for all of her hard work. She's always reaching out to the community, finding solutions to reach, to make our programming more effective. Thank you, Amy Casillo Ozorio and Ms. Rich for your hard work. I feel that your parent outreach is the most important thing because the parents encourage the children, and they're the ones who set the guidelines and say, bring me home 100, like my dad told me. That's what makes the child see the importance of education, that makes for a better student. So any program that you have, and you have outlined many, that encourage and strengthen the parents is what's necessary, because the parents, they're the ones who are overwhelmed, they've got to get the child to school, they're just the key. And any supports you can give the parent and classes and empowerment to the parent, I just strongly support that because that makes for a stronger student. So I have nothing but respect for the program. My only other point would be that I would hope that we would encourage each parent group that is working with us to also work with the district, to always be positive to come up with positive solutions to problems and to realize they are in partnership with us to help come up with solutions to things that face our parents and our school. That's my only comments.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a few questions, quickly. I know we're running out of time. With the PELs and their payment, so that has changed, before it was kind of like a lump sum they were given, now they're given, they're being paid hourly, Ramona?
Yeah, it's changed from when we were principals, where they used to be provided a stipend from the district. They are paid hourly, they work up to 40 hours per month, and they receive $15 per hour. And they're paid, I think, every other week, bi-weekly, correct?
That's great. Bi-weekly. What information I would be looking? What information I would be looking for is that I saw the chart that showed who the participants were. What I'm curious, possibly if you could get me the information of how many? Like, how many people are going to those, the trainings? And I'd like to see, like, the breakdown of that. And it does take me back to when we were principals, Ramona, to the Epstein model back in the 90s, and we did all of the training, and that went on when we were program coordinators and assistant principals, and it was a very beneficial time in the district. So I just appreciate your team and the work you're doing in bringing us back to that collaborative situation with our parents and families, because it really, it really does help. I want to thank the superintendent for organizing the topic tonight, and we will now go to our next meeting.
Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you so much.
I have a couple of comments I just want to say, before we go to the next meeting. I think if you build, they will come, and I think what you saw tonight is that this is a department that is steadily building, and I think, you know, that we will begin to see some increased academic achievement because we're partnering with our parents. We really are one of very few districts that are doing the kind of work that we are doing with our parents and caregivers. So I also just want to give kudos to this team. They've come up with this research-based framework. I think tonight you saw that they are really beginning to use data. I saw that the board members are digging and want a little more data, which is good. I think that's good. And I think this is a team that, you know, they've begun to use data, and I think we're gonna allow the data to keep informing our practice so that, you know, we continue to get better and better, and get more and more parents and caregivers and community members involved. The trainings, I'm told, were fantastic. Everybody that I heard from had very positive things to say about the training being really relevant and meaningful, and they feel like they got a lot from it. So I just also want to give kudos. And when I see that we've had 11,000 hits from Facebook posts, that tells me that folks are interested, they're interested in what's happening with our parents and with their children. So just kudos, great presentation.
Thank you so much.
And we thank you, Superintendent Williams.
You're always, your support, your support, your approval of everything that we do, couldn't do it without you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members and Dr. Williams, are we ready to transition to student achievement?
Yes, sir.
All right. Just want to say, as I begin my first meeting in this role as the Vice President of Student Achievement, that this work really centers on the superintendent and district goals, five goals, five by 25. All goals, all of these goals in some way impact student achievement, but directly related are number one and number two. And just quickly, number one, eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps by providing excellent and equitable student outcomes for all. And number two, access to educational excellence and accelerated learning by assuring that all students have access to high-quality instruction that is cultural and linguistically responsive in all classrooms and all BPS schools. I think it's, the superintendent often talks about these goals, and I think it's good for us to continue to go back to them, to focus us, and be sure that we're spending our time, primarily our time on student achievement and outcomes. So with that said, before I turn it over to Dr. Williams, we have a wonderful presentation tonight that will be given by Mr. Rob Harris, Director of CTE, on our internships and work-based learning opportunities. And then I believe we'll have staff from Say Yes Buffalo that is going to present on our new Say Yes apprenticeship programs. So, Dr. Williams?
Don't have much to say, except to say that, you know, Mr. Harris does a fantastic job. He's got a lot that he works with. He works under our Division of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction with Chief Badachelli. And tonight, you know, this is a really exciting, another nuance for Buffalo. You know, I don't think there is another district or school in any surrounding area of Western New York that offers what we are able to offer to our children as far as work-based learning, which really are learning experiences that allow our children to explore different careers and different career goals. So I'm gonna turn things over to Director Harris, and he will begin his presentation.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Williams. Thank you for having me here this evening and sharing this information with you. I wanted to start off by giving an explanation about why I broke up internships and how it falls into work-based learning opportunities. I wanted to give the definition given by State Education Department, and kind of like give you a guideline about how I have to operate in order to provide these opportunities for our students. So, and then at the end, I'm going to have Johanna Kaplan, who represents Say Yes, talk about our partnerships in these apprenticeships that we're moving forward for our students. All right? Admire, do you have the tech? Yes, thank you so much. You can go on to the next slide. So, the CTE Department falls under, in the, moving to the next level bargain, we fall under the commitment to innovative high schools. As we know, the CTE Department is committed to providing innovative career programming that is based on regional Department of Labor data, as well as industry advisory input and our students' interest. And that's how we maintain our programming for Buffalo schools. There are three different factors that basically guide our work. Next slide, please. Under the five by, under the five by 25, the CTA Department works to increase industry and advisory partners that will assist in eliminating gaps and strengthening connections to the community. So that is why we fall under number one and number five, the goals in eliminating opportunity and achievement gaps by providing equitable student outcomes for all, and activating partnerships, which is number five, which, which will expand learning beyond the classroom and connect the community to the classroom. Next slide, please. Basically, in this overview, I want to give you the definition of work-based learning experiences and internships with guys, which guides our CTE work. I'm gonna give you an overview of the work-based learning framework, current district work-based learning data, and how many internships and work-based learning opportunities we have. I'm gonna talk about upcoming internships, and I'm gonna give you a little brief understanding about our commitment to the Youth Employment Coalition, as well as, at the end, Say Yes Apprenticeship is a partnership. We're gonna discuss that with Johanna Kaplan, capping off this opportunity. Before I move forward, is there a hard stop to tonight's meeting? I want to be cognizant of the time. Anyone?
Yes, we are trying very hard to keep our committee meetings to one hour.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would say if we can finish up by 7:05, that would be good.
Okay, we're gonna work to give you the presentation and leave time for you to ask questions at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. So, the New York State Education Department definition of work-based experiences, work-based learning is authentic learning experience that allows students to explore their career goals, abilities, and interests while applying their academic and technical knowledge and skills in a real-world content. These experiences are planned and supervised by the CTE instructional staff in collaboration with business, industry, or community partners. High-quality work-based learning will provide effective and equitable experiences to empower all students to become competent workers and culturally competent citizens of New York State. You can find that information on the State Ed website. Next slide, please. Here we have the framework. The Office of Career and Technical Education in Consultation with the Stakeholders Impacted by Work-Based Learning Programs has provided a conceptual framework for high-quality work-based learning in New York. This framework is broken down into three components, and it shows the development of high-quality work-based learning experiences throughout the lifespan, and serves as a visual guide for your work-based learning. As you can see, what we are supposed to be doing is exposing our students from the birth years all the way up to adulthood. In between, where CTE falls, we're providing career awareness, career exploration, and career development. So under the work-based learning framework, career awareness is where students are used to career fairs and expos, interest surveys, industry-related credentials, and industry tours. And that usually happens around grades nine, the grades seven, eight, nine, and 10, because we're not getting them into the workforce at that point so early. Career exploration is when our students are doing community service, volunteering, they're completing industry-based projects, they're doing interviews to provide them information on specific careers, their school-based enterprises. If you've ever seen a school store, CTE students are running that school store, and they're receiving work-based learning hours according to the requirement by New York State Education Department. And that's also their service learning. Career development is where the meat of this internship-like opportunities are. We find apprenticeships, internships, and that can be either internal or private, and I'll explain that later on. They can be community-based work programs, which are provided specifically for our students with disabilities. There are appearance enhancement programs, as well as clinical experiences where our students are working to receive their Certified Nursing Assistant license when they complete their internship with High Point Care Center. Okay? Next slide, please. So, under career development, it usually happens for grades 11 and 12, after some CTE coursework and training. This is just a list of some of the examples and information that some of our students are performing in right now. Internships, and internal and private, we have an example of Mayor Summer Youth. What happened is, we are in partnership with the Mayor Summer Youth to ensure that our students can receive internship opportunities within the days, within hazardous work areas, and those are defined by the Department of Labor. Community-based work programs are works for students with disability. As I said, there are programs provided to get them ready to move into the world of work and become productive citizens. Appearance enhancement happens with our SPA program. You can go over to the program, and you can get your nails done, and you can get some hair things done, but you can't do the, any chemicals to the hair at this point in time. The clinical experience, all of our students in the Certified Nurse Assistant are going to High Point, and they're working with our elderly patients over there. They do that three times a week for three hours a day. And then our apprenticeships, we're partnering with Say Yes for experiences that lead to long-term positions. Next slide, please. So, we have district-registered internship-like work experiences. When we say district-registered, we have to register all of our experience with the State Ed Department and let them know exactly what's going on in those experiences in order to ensure that we're abiding by the Department of Labor laws, as well as the components that State Ed is requiring us to abide by. So there's Career Exploration Internship Program. It's age 14 and up, it can be unpaid. Students do not complete productive work. School credit can be earned. There's a General Education Work Experience Program. That's for students ages 14 and up. It's paid or it's unpaid. Students complete productive work. One classroom period of CTE is needed in order for a student to be in what is called a General Education Work Experience Program. Cooperative Career and Tech Ed Work Experience is where most of our work is right now, because we have to cooperate with different entities in order to get this done, and to make sure that our students are doing productive work that aligns to their CTE experiences. So usually, our students have to be 16 and up, paid or unpaid experiences are out there. Productive work is done, supported by a class period, and there's also school credit that a student can receive in addition to completing this cooperative career tech work experience. Next slide, please. So now I'm gonna give you a little data about the current internal internships. In conjunction with the Mayor Summer Youth Internship Program, we are able to offer 300 to 350 slots for our students. And this is beyond other experiences that are out there for other Mayor Summer Youth students, right? This is information from last year's program. I'm giving you up-to-date information, and I'm letting you know exactly what was going on. So you see here that we had Emerson, Buffalo Culinary, McKinley's Building Trades, McKinley's Horticulture, Bergard Advanced Manufacturing. And this is a reminder, we have to partner with Mayor Summer Youth so that our teachers are on the premises, working with our students, because they are considered hazardous work environments. Next slide, please. We have current internal internships, and that, more internships, there are, Northland Districtwide is working with us to do 150 slots every year to learn about the specific areas in advanced manufacturing. Riverside has a conservation program. There's work with the SPCA in conservation. Beam is one of our partners, and they're providing GHD in engineering. And nursing clinicals, there are about 15 students in nursing clinicals, and community work program. Next slide, please. Now, in internal internships outcomes, the students receive targeted training per the CTE program, satisfying the minimal hour of work-based learning that our students have to get. But we try to provide a robust, rigorous experience so that they're getting exactly what they need in order to move into the field of work, or they're moving into college readiness. A minimum of 120 work hours are done with the Mayor Summer Youth. It's a minimum of 120 hours. They haven't changed it much, but we're gonna stick to the 120 hours, which exceeds what is needed for students that are working in a work-based program. Paid minimum wage per the Department of Labor Regulations. So all of our students, in conjunction with Department of Labor, and making sure that we're abiding by those rules and regulations, have to be paid at minimum wage. Students develop employment skills. All of our students are developing those employment skills, beyond just the technical skills they're learning in the class, they're learning how to go to work. What is the expectation of your behaviors in a work environment? Those are the things that our students are learning. CNA students specifically receive 108 unpaid hours, but become, become certified as a nurse assistant, they take, I'm sorry, but become ready for the Certified Nurse Assistant exam. They have to complete their 108 hours in order to be... in order to be eligible to take that Certified Nurse Assistant exam that we provide at the end of their work-based learning. While working with the Mayor Summer Youth, students are eligible for employment during their college years as well. This program extends all the way until they're 21 years old, and usually, the mayor's office works with us to either connect them to the places that they're already working in or provide them another placement. Also, working with the mayor's, I'm working with the mayor's office to expand upon these experiences. I believe that we have a lot of our students that are already working for Mayor Summer Youth that will probably fit into the general exploration program, and we have to provide that information to the state, and we're looking to improve upon that. And then, lastly, 100% of our summer internship program students completed it successfully. There is an evaluation piece to this. The students have to sign off on the evaluation piece. The teachers evaluate the students, and 100% of our students have completed the program and are eligible to move on and take the program if they need to next year. Next slide, please. Our current private internships. When I say private, this means that the companies that we're working with are reaching into their own payrolls to pay our students and provide the insurances needed in order for them to be employed with their particular branch of work. So, we have AIS, AIS Computing, that does all of the computing for our Buffalo schools. They provide 30 slots for our students in the program in CTE. National Grid is started last year, asking for meter readers. We got three, and those were three positions provided, and those were pretty high-wage positions. GEICO was working with us. That one is probably defunct right now, because the person that was in human resources working with us has moved on. Wegmans is a big partner of ours. They have been working with all of our schools, but particularly our culinary schools. Specifically, they give students 25 slots in their program on a yearly basis. Jacobs Institute provides jumpstart programs that they try to get as many of students as they can. Roswell provides medical opportunities for our students. Montante Solar, who's a partner in installing our solar on our buildings, has also provided internship opportunities. Tesla, who's also a partner. At the end of their curriculum, those students have an opportunity to have a full-time job with Tesla, because they're a partner in devising how our students are educated in order to work in their particular area. Delaware North is a great partner as well. We've been doing about 25 students. At this point in time, we have students currently working with them. It's not just a summer opportunity. Next slide, please. Where internships that I'm working on currently, I'm working on an expansion with Delaware North. AIS is working with me to do an expansion in our IT department. MNT, I was rekindling our relationship with them last night. They're looking to do some big things with our students as far as tech. We have four new ones that are Arubis Meadows, which I was introduced by Dr. Brown, and Martha Younger. Lyceum is at the table. Tate Con is at the table, as well as Garden Gate Nursing, because our students used to work with them during their clinicals, and now they want to expand it and expand the partnership to go beyond just medical and in other trades. And then, we're also working on an expansion of Mayor Summer Youth, and I told you, a lot of our students are already working Mayor Summer Youth and could fit into general education work experiences. Next slide, please. So, some CTE work-based learning data. 200 of our partners are working with our students at all times. We're working to grow that. We have a career advisory network in which we invite partners to join us and let us know what they can provide for our students in, by the way, of work-based learning. We have 350 to 400 internal or private internships, and that's growth for this new year. We have 100% of our students are working with our partners in some work-based learning capacity already. And we are partnering with the Youth Coalition, the Youth Employment Coalition, to work on students that may be separated from a traditional school environment, usually 16 to 21. Their goal is to bring those students into the fold and make them employable. And now, we have apprenticeship opportunities through their workforce development initiatives. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to introduce you to Say Yes in our apprentice partnership with them. They're devising a plan to implement new apprenticeship opportunities. They're recruiting new interns so that we can grow our work-based opportunity. They're building the partners' cultural responsiveness for diversity and equity and inclusion efforts. That is the big work that they're trying to do. They want to make sure that our new partners are culturally responsive and understand the needs of the students that we serve. Matching students to partners based on interests and skill set, and they're finding ways to reduce the barriers for successful, long-term, high-wage, high-demand employment. Next slide, please. So, now what I would like to do is introduce Johanna Kaplan. She's going to talk to you about, a little about Say Yes Apprenticeship Program, and then, we're going to allow you time for questions at the end of that. Johanna?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for having me. As Rob said, my name is Johanna Kaplan. I am the Student Relationships Manager with Say Yes Buffalo and specifically for our Youth Apprenticeship Program. Could we see my slide deck, please?
It's a separate deck, admire.
Just a second. I've got it right here, coming up.
Thank you, sir.
So, with this deck, I'm going to be providing just kind of a high-level overview of our program. We have had our pilot year completed and are in our second year now. For sake of time, I will be going a little bit quickly, but please feel free to ask any questions. You have the deck, and I'm always available after today for questions as well. Next slide, please. So, this Youth Apprenticeship Program is really just a natural evolution of our Say Yes program. Say Yes is largely known for our scholarship opportunities to higher education, but it's really a credos of career perspective, and we come in on that career end of things. We have a workforce development department that includes both our apprenticeship program and our internship program, which I will quickly highlight at the end of the presentation. Next slide. So, the Youth Apprenticeship Program is really bridging this gap between education and career. So, our vision is to create a clear pathway for youth to accessible, equitable apprenticeship opportunities that reliably lead to secure, mid-wage, mid-skill employment. Next slide. We call this a modern apprenticeship. So, we typically think of apprenticeships in the traditional model within the skilled trades, career fields, which are amazing opportunities, and this builds off of that and creates similar modeled opportunities within non-traditional pathways and more corporate environments, such as that, or advanced manufacturing, and many other fields as well. So, it's a spin-off of traditional apprenticeships, and Say Yes really serves as the intermediary for all of this work. We are called Careerwise Greater Buffalo. We are an affiliate of a national organization called Careerwise, and we really just bring together all the moving pieces and partners to make this happen. We very much have a village mindset to make this work happen. It is a work-based learning opportunity that combines paid employment, on-the-job learning, and related classroom-based instruction. At the completion, apprentices will have industry credentials and/or college credit, three years of work experience, social capital, and professional networks. And we all know how crucially important all of those elements are to having long-term, career-oriented pathways after education. Next slide, please. So, how it works, this is the traditional model for modern youth apprenticeship. I do want to note that for our pilot year and the second year, we are taking a little bit of a deviation where we're focusing on graduating seniors. So, all three years of their time in our program, their classroom instruction is with higher ed institutions. Our pilot year was with Hilbert College and Northland, and that will continue into our second year, also adding on Villa Maria as well. So, you see the combination of all the different learning models. I'll speak to this later, but we are working to develop a task force to strategize how to move the program up into the high school years. But with both models, the point is just to be an options multiplier. So, at the end of this program, apprentices will have options to become a full-time employee earning a livable wage where they have been working, or become a competitive workforce, a candidate within the workforce. Or maybe they want to achieve a two-year degree that this sparks something for them and helps them figure out their passion, or both. The point is just to give them those options to enter into the workforce into really livable wage career opportunities. Next slide, please. The employer benefits from this program as well. They get to build those local talent pipelines. We know that a lot of our workforces are predominantly white, and we have a huge potential of talent in our community with our black and brown young professionals. So, it builds those pipelines where they don't naturally exist already. A big component of this is our racial equity learning for our employer partners. Racial equity is just the basis of everything we do at Say Yes in general, and especially in this program. So, those equity conversations are had from the screening process with employer partners throughout the duration of their time with us. Also, want to specifically highlight that before our employer partners even interact with their students, they go through anti-bias training, racial equity training, and there's ongoing racial equity think-takes that are being brought back as well to have that conversation be just the predominant conversation. It also allows us that if any barriers come up, we're able to go back to that equity basis and identify equity issues as they arise and work around that to make sure that we are providing that equitable program for our youth, because it's what they deserve. And they also receive ongoing support and coaching from our Say Yes staff. I'll speak in a moment about the support for students, but employers get that support as well through us, and we can already see that happening where maybe a situation arises, and they're not. It's new to them. They don't know how to handle it. They know they can come to us for support. Next slide, please. On the recruitment end, we are unique in comparison to some other models where we have what we call career coaches embedded right in the school buildings. So, they're able to work collaboratively with guidance counselors and with CTE to have those career-oriented conversations with our youth and then identify students who maybe don't want to, aren't ready to go to college right after high school, are interested in the career pathways we have available, and really find students who are interested and aligned with this program, and then, support them throughout the application process. Those one-on-one relationships is where we find the magic happens, and they're really able to do that. We have incredibly talented staff in the buildings, and it just sets up students for success going throughout the process. So, that has really been a key for us in this pilot year that we are going to continue throughout the program. So, this goes a little bit more into the process of what that looks like. I don't want to read the slide to you, but it's all through this hiring hub, creating a profile that is their application. And then, it's very easy to click a button. They just have to click a button to apply to the apprenticeship opportunities. So, we kind of try to combine a mix of making things accessible and easy, but also preparing them for the real-world experience as well. So, interviews are not guaranteed. Apprenticeships are not guaranteed. You know, it really models what it's going to be like in the real world just within a very supportive, accessible experience. Next slide, please. So, a recap of our pilot year. We were able to build a team of seven, leading our program operations, our student recruitment efforts, and the employer growth and retention. We received over 1,300 applications from over 200 students, and it was just astounding. I mean, the response just speaks volumes. And I have to say that we would not have had the success without the collaboration and partnership of BPS from Dr. Williams and her team, to Rob Harris and his team, to the administration and staff, and then, school buildings. It's just been such a warm and welcome response to this new program, and we know new programs can be a little bit, you know, uncomfortable at times, but just such a warm welcome and high-level collaboration that allowed this kind of response from students. So, just very appreciative. We piloted in six schools last year, and are continuing with those six schools now, and that is McKinley, Bergard, MST, South Park, Hutch Tech, and Riverside. We do accept applications from any BPS student, but as far as having the career coaches in the buildings to provide that high level of support, we are still focused on those six schools until we grow our team. We hired 25 apprentices with six inaugural employers. Those employers are MNT Bank, Rich Products, Tesla, HARMAC, Moog, and Wegmans within the fields of advanced manufacturing, business operations, and IT. We've had employer partners who are just really bought into what we're selling. They bought into this modern youth apprenticeship program. They have bought into our students. They have bought into the equity. It's been really exciting to see. They've been with us from the ground up, growing this program. And we do, we're very intentional about getting feedback, both from youth and employers, so that we're building a program that serves everyone. Again, we are just the intermediary, bringing all this together. But we want to make sure that everyone's needs are being met. We also have technical assistance from Careerwise and our national partner, the Partnerships to Advance Youth Apprenticeships and New America. They have been doing this for a very long time with best-in-class models across the country. So, we're able to learn from them, and we really have the adapt-not-adopt model. So, we adapt what we learn from other people who are doing this amazingly well, but adapted to our community, because we know our community. So, it's been wonderful to have their support. We've had a successful launch of press events and media coverage, and we also did a week-long boot camp for our hired apprentices. Rob spoke to this earlier about that preparation for what it's like to work. It's not just the technical skills. It's the, how do you communicate with your boss and your colleagues? What do you do if you're late? What does casual Friday mean? So, on those soft skills, we did this boot camp for them, which is a training that got paid for. We're going to expand on that this year, but was really key into building a cohort feeling amongst all the apprentices, which continues now that they are working, so that they have that peer support as well. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of a deeper dive on the employer partners and our first cohort of 25 students. This shows the distribution of where they were hired and what field they were in. Attrition is also normal with our program, so we currently stand at 21 students. But for typical attrition rates, we are very proud of that, and it's a really strong showing for our first year of the program. Next slide, please. Oops, sorry. I think that went the wrong way. Can we advance it a couple slides? Thank you. Perfect. So, looking ahead, as apprentices complete their three years in our program, the goal is for them to have a job offer for a full-time position, earning at least $45,000 a year, a certificate or a two-year degree, and for some, a New York State Department of Labor certified registration. So, the goal is, each pathway is very nuanced and a little bit different, but the goal is that when they complete this, they have a job offer and some sort of tangible item saying that they completed this program and can use that to be a competitive candidate in the workforce. Our goal is to recruit and hire 50 apprentices for cohort two, so we're in the middle of that process right now. We are bringing back some employer partners from last year and adding on new employer partners, so it's really exciting to see the program grow. We also are focused on supporting the retention of Cohort One apprentices. We have what's called a success coach, who is there for coaching and mentoring and case management for students who are hired and supported throughout their three years. So, as I said, we have the employer support, but we are very heavy on the apprentice support as well. And we will be growing that team as our apprentices grow as well. Again, as I said earlier, we are going to be putting together a task force to strategize how to move this program into the high school years, and I will be facilitating that process. And then, also, down the line is a regional expansion. We are called Careerwise Greater Buffalo for a reason, to grow this beyond the city of Buffalo. So, right now, that's still just in the exploration phase, but that is the goal, to make this a regional effort. Next slide, please. This is the team, the team of seven, that has gotten all of this started. We are already starting to grow our team. We have interviews coming up, new positions posted. This is just going to continue to grow, but this is the initial team of seven, showing our senior director, my colleague who works with the business partnerships, and our team of career and success coaches. Next slide, please. And just briefly, want to mention, as I said, we are a workforce development department, so we so we also have an internship and career pathways program, which is where I started off and where Stephanie started off. It is an opportunity for our Say Yes scholars who are enrolled full-time in college to be hired for 10-week paid internship opportunities over the summer, they are all paid. Applicants must be, have completed their first year of college by the time their internship starts, so they can apply during their freshman year for a summer internship, but that, those first two, first two semesters are a big adjustment, and we want them to acclimate to college. So once they've gone through that process, then they are eligible for this program. And again, full-rounded support, that's just how we work at Say Yes. So they have support from that program supervisor with resume and cover letter and interview preparation, and also for those who are hired, a series of professional development workshops to really give a all-rounded experience throughout their summer. So I just wanted to mention that we have that program as well, and that is all I have for right now.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Kaplan and Mr. Harris for those great presentations. We have about 15 minutes to get this concluded at the time that Dr. Williams said we should complete this. So I'm going to go in reverse order, reverse alphabetical order, to have my board colleagues comment and ask questions. So start us off, Board Member Woods.
I am just impressed with the number of opportunities, the way you hold the students' hands, and the way you're trying to guarantee that our students go, as you said, from cradle to career. I just applaud the program, it's great. I don't really have any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Board Member Shuda, any comments or questions?
Yes, real quick, first of all, I also want to say thank you for the development of these programs. It really, they really enhance interest in the school day and I've seen firsthand. I also want to comment that one of the young ladies working for Say Yes, Jennifer Ray, is a former Vail Victorian from South Park High School, and she previously worked with Project Sore for Cradle Beach, and she was there when I was there, and I just think it's great to see one of our own kids encouraging our students now. So I'm all for this, I look forward to watching this program grow, and I want to thank Mr. Harris, he's always helped South Park in the development of programs, and I look forward to working with you folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuda. Board Member McCos, I'm sorry, Board Member Rivera.
Mostly, I echo my board colleagues' praise. Thank you very much for these wonderful programs, they truly do make a difference for students, and I look forward to seeing more as you develop more.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Board Member McCosi.
You, and it's not redundant when it's repetitive, it just means that that's how great you guys are. I really, again, I appreciate this, I went to your presentation and kind of your yearly meeting, I believe it was last year, and I just want to uplift that so many of our schools have so many programs, and the amount of programs, and if that could be like really listed, and if we as board members and folks can really make sure folks are aware of each school and all the different programs that are available. I, you know, on a personal level, know of the Montante and the Solar piece, and how many students have gone through that program. We're talking years ago, at least 10 years ago, where we had students working on the BPS school buildings, and was a part of that work, and just hearing their stories at that last meeting is incredible. So again, I just appreciate you all, and I want to do whatever I can to make sure you're uplifted, as sometimes the opportunities for a career is, you know, the way that students want to go or need to go, and we're doing a great job, I think, and that's all to your work, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCosi. Board Member McEckin.
Thank you. I'm going to echo, once again, what we have heard from our colleagues here, but I do want to just add that at the tail end of your presentation, Johanna, you mentioned the 10-week program, and we've had, in my day role, right, a couple individuals pass through that way, and it was awesome to work over that 10-week period through the summer with individuals, and to see the change, and to have them continue to engage with us as they grow and evolve in their careers now, right, because they're finishing school, and it's been a few years. So, I mean, just kudos to you guys, right, as we see the fruits of those efforts and folks coming back, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McEckin. Board Member Hurd.
Thank you, Chairman Scott. You know, I don't want to echo everything I've already said, but I have to give, you know, my heart out to Mr. Harris, the work he's doing over the CT department, Ms. Kaplan, for a great presentation, and giving describing the body of work that you're doing over at Say Yes, and also David Russ, who's a president of Say Yes, but just does outstanding job, you know, hiring great people, you know, with that same mindset of helping, you know, children of need. I would just like to, we always talk about our track for college and college placement for our kids, and one thing we don't recognize is children that's going into the workforce since, through our CT programs. So I like to keep a database or make sure that that's inclusive in our end-of-year reports so that we can have a track on our children that's going to our CT programs that may be going straight into employment, you know, starting families, and using these tools, these great tools to, you know, project their lives. There's a saying that every child is not meant for college, but, you know, it's children or people is meant for hands-on and development and building, and we have a slew of opportunities here in Buffalo and Western New York that we can meet those needs, and that's how Buffalo was built, so we can continue on that track. I think that we get that balance of our college-ready kids and our children that's vocational already, that we can have a comparison, so we can have a better projection of what we know here in the Buffalo schools. I'd like to say thank you once again, and I just want one question, just one question, is about the, about the high school task force. We know, I heard you say that, that Say Yes career coaches reach out to these children and for these opportunities, but in the CT department, I know, Mr. Harris, you're reaching out to these individuals also, so are we reaching all our guidance counselors, and who can make recommendations, the teachers, the guidance counselors? Is it the children themselves, or are they looking for the parents to be informed with the children?
So I'll start off, it's like a twofold process for them while they're in high school. Usually, our partners are looking for students to fill positions, or we're looking to make sure our students do an exploration program. What we try to do is do the process actually how a work offering would be. You have to complete an application, you have to do all of those things that it would take in order to get yourself a job. Sometimes it's producing resumes, and sometimes it's producing cover letters, but usually when the opportunity arises from our employer, we ensure that it's operating just like it's a regular job, they have to apply. Usually, our teachers are assisting our students, because that's where career and financial management comes in. Our students are learning how to write resumes, how to complete cover letters, and then that process, it basically is defined by what is the employer need, or what we're doing as far as the program is going on. We have counselors involved in the situation as well, so it can be a different, a myriad of different things, it's dependent on the partners and dependent on what I'm trying to do with a specific program. Johanna, for your piece?
Yes, for our program, those career coaches, because they're directly in the buildings, they can work with guidance counselors and with CTE to help identify students. They also do presentations in front of seniors, since that's what we're focused on right now is graduating seniors. So it kind of just varies depending on the building and what kind of programs they have and opportunities to be in front of youth. Sometimes there are senior meetings, sometimes they're finding the teachers who see the most amount of seniors. They're really good at tapping into who has great relationships with the seniors, and so kind of a multifaceted effort. And then as they start getting the word out there, largely focused down more on those one-on-one relationships to really do the work and figure out if there's alignment and walk them through the process.
And as you can see, we're both trying to reach out to kids in different ways, to make sure there are a myriad different ways to reach them, so we don't have barriers. We're trying to ensure that we don't have any barriers to get them to that next level.
Okay, my only reason why I asked that, my concern is, we have students that some, they have not like scored great going into, for like a Hutch Test program for engineering, but they're engineers, but they're in a field that, you know, they're, you know, don't really want to be in, but they want to be engineers, so we can reach out to those type of children, those type, you know, situations also.
Correct, that's what, that's what Say Yes is bringing to the table. So when a kid maybe doesn't fall into a CT career that he wants to do in high school, they offer different job opportunities with different partners that are just looking for people to be employed. So we don't keep them in a CTE program and say, you can't go and apply for this job. We offer a myriad of opportunities and make sure that any kid could get in there. In actuality, National Grid offered us the position, and they didn't really care what the, where the kids came from when they offered that position. They just wanted to make sure that the student was employable, and they had the wherewithal in order to apply for a job, maintain a job, and be successful in the world of work.
And I also want to add for the, part of the process with youth apprenticeship is within their profile, they're selecting skills and traits that they have, so it's not based on what experience, work experiences they've had, because that becomes an equity issue. So it's based on skills and traits, and we really talk to the employers about, don't hire based off of experience, hire based off of curiosity and passion and desire to learn, which is just, it's really a movement of thinking that extends beyond this program. So, and even once they're hired as an apprentice, they're evaluated based on competencies, and that's how they achieve success within the apprenticeship program, is achieving proficiency within the competencies. So it's a different way of thinking about preparedness and hiring and success that we think is really advantageous to our youth and just, you know, to humans in general, in my opinion.
Thank you, thank you, that's wonderful, thank you, I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Chairman Scott. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Vice President, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Chairman Scott, thank you, Mr. Harris and Ms. Kaplan, for a wonderful presentation. I'm so excited. Since I've been on this board, I didn't realize how thorough CTE was. One of the observations I have is, you know, when you talk about CNAs, have you thought about, you know, going to another level and include LPN-type program so that, you know, young people can get experience with, you know, LPN licensure, for example, or cosmetology? I know when I was in high school, those are the kinds of licenses that some of my friends came out with, and they still, you know, use that as a career, and some have gone on to our ends and, you know, owning their own cosmetology, you know, businesses, et cetera. And then I was thinking about what you said, Ms. Kaplan, in terms of, you said you were only in six schools, what is the plan to expand to other schools this year? Because I think, you know, our kids need an opportunity to know that this does exist. Thank you.
Sure. Rob, do you want to go first, or do you want me to go first?
Yeah, I can go first. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware, I'm abiding by the Department of Labor rules and some of the rules that guide the practices of us having certain programs at the high school level. Unfortunately, when I was in school, LPN was an offering by Buffalo Schools Districts. When they changed the regulations, we had to move it to an adult program, and it has to be after they're 18 in order for them to move on to LPN. But I do have other goals of expanding on medical programs that we can offer. We can offer a home healthcare assistant for our students, we can offer an EMT program for our students, so there are other high school-level medical programs that we can offer. Unfortunately, that LPN had changed into the Departments of Licensure, so we had to make sure that we were only providing the CNA at this point in time, and we were, CNA is a high-level graduation rate and completion rate. We're in the high 90s, we're trying to get the word out to our students and our parent. This is the first level into the nursing doctor, doctoral fields. If you want to be in medical, you want to take this CNA coursework, and we'll get you into the other fields. We have partners that are working with us right now to expose our students to the other different pathways in the medical field. So we're talking, we're going to expand, I'm telling you right now, there is going to be an expansion, okay? I'm telling you, there will be another CTE offering of a medical program coming up, all right? And as far as your appearance enhancement, I believe Board Member Shuda has seen me over there working at South Park, pulling together a full cosmetology program. So there's an operational approval that I have to get from the Department of Licensure as well, as far as where these specific programs are placed. I have the licensure to run it at South Park because of the facilities and how we put it together. What we're going to do is expand the spa intro and move it into a full cosmetology program. So that is in the works. And then what I'm doing is trying to start it small, and then if there's, just like we did with Emerson and Buffalo Culinary, if there's room for expansion, we'll put it in another part of the city in order to make it work for everybody that's involved and all of our students. So those are the two things that I can do. I want you to know, I'm not just sitting on my laurels, I'm going to bring to you some new things, and sometimes we have to close programs dependent on regulations, Department of Labor, and I just want you to be aware of that. I can't just close a program. I have to have permission from state ed in order to close programs, and I have to apply in order to open programs.
And as far as our program goes in the timeline, I don't want to give a specific date because I don't want to speak incorrectly, but it is part of our strategic plan and growth plan to do that soon. It involves bringing on additional career coaches so that we can have that one-on-one support within the buildings, but I just want to emphasize that we will accept applications from any BPS student. We don't want to hold back an opportunity from anybody, it's really, those six schools are more about providing that one-on-one career coach support within the buildings. Last year, we've done a presentation in front of the guidance counselors so that they're able to, outside of those six schools, also identify students who would be aligned and eligible for this opportunity, which we will hopefully be able to do again this year, so that we do have that opportunity, because it is about exposure and knowledge and making sure, and we want to provide equitable opportunities. So it's really about just like the growth of the program, and when we're able to grow our team to provide that level of support.
And I also want you guys to know that Johanna and I are really working in concert, so she knows what's going on on my side, we're not duplicating services on her side, we're not clashing, we're growing together in order to make this work. So we're having monthly meetings directly with each other, and it's inclusive of some other partners, but more than usual, it's going to be her and I just working on our pieces to make sure that we're not clashing, and it works for everybody across the board.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. President Belton-Cotman.
Thank you, thank you both for your presentation. You mentioned, Rob, that we have 200 partners.
Yes, ma'am.
Working with our students. Are any of those resulting in any certifications for our children?
Yes, because, remember I told you at the beginning, work-based learning opportunities, our students have to complete 54 work-based learning opportunities. And I want you to know that CTE students, when they receive a technical endorsement, that means that they have culminated and completed all of those pieces that are in a CTE program. So let me give you an example of a student that completed a technical endorsement and went down to Charlotte, Charlotte, North Carolina. She gave us a call, and she had to verify her experiences that she had in order to get this new job that she was going to get. So we had to provide her with that information so she could get the new job. Technical endorsements are what is, our students are going to be able to take into the workforce and get more money than the next student. Technical endorsements are going to be something that our students are going to get, go to college and be able to say, I don't have to take this and be able to say, "I don't have to take this class because I have an articulation or a dual credit." All CTE programs have to have some college association. Therefore, we're able to give them two pathways. You can go directly to the world of work with your technical endorsement, or you can go into college with your articulation or your dual credit.
Okay, so the 200 partners that we have, okay, or partnerships, I should say, are they corporate partners?
It can be a different group, a lot of different levels of partners. We have a lot of corporate partners. I was actually with M&amp;T last night, working with M&amp;T to get the rekindle the thing. We have Tesla at the table with our school over at South Park. Tesla will hire our students immediately after they complete the program. It is a part of our MOU with that partner. IBM at Bennett, they're going to do the same thing as a part of these grants, some of these P-Tech grants that we have, that the whole point is to get our students to the world of work with skills and the ability to take on a position and hold a position. So those are some of the big partners. And you saw that Johanna had Moog at the table, Wegmans at the table. So it can go all the way from big partners to small business partners that we work with. And that's why we have 200 of them, because we can go from the big to the small.
Okay, so this technical endorsement, are you saying that's the certification? Because Larry Quinn, when he was on the board, used to say that his business friend, men, partners, or friends were saying that they wanted our children to come, we needed more children to be certified. Am I talking the same thing, are we talking the same thing when we talk about technical endorsements versus certifications?
I don't know what he may have been talking about, but there are different level certifications that our students receive. So it's like if I'm talking about our CNA students, they are going to be certified in CPR. If I talk about our building trades students, they're going to be certified in OSHA, which is a safety in the workforce. So there are certifications, stackable credentials, we like to call them, stackable credentials that our students can receive to go into the workforce. Now, I don't know what certification he was talking about.
He was talking about the construction industry, is what he was talking about.
Right, so there are some definitely, yup. There are definitely some stackable credentials that our students attain.
Okay, so can we come back at another meeting and see what this, what that picture looks like? I'm curious to know if we get in, what our grade is in that area. Are we, how many, how many stackables are we getting? How many certifications? Because we still are in the academic world. Do we get an A, B, C, or D in that area? I want to know where we are, because when I have a businessman of his caliber reaching out saying, Sharon, we want to get more students employed with our people and doing things in the trades, I want to be able to at least have a conversation in the future with him about what we're currently doing, and then engage a conversation on what we need to do in order to guarantee. And this piggybacks on the conversation I had, or that we, when we were down in Florida, when we attended what was going on in the Dallas School District, where the partnerships that they are working with, in particularly in the work environment, where their students go and take classes a certain percentage of the day, and then they go and work in private industry during, in the afternoon, and they're coming back with, and they're getting the jobs when they graduate, because many of these children are already prepared because they have those relationships. And I'd like to see, Madam Chair, Mr. Chair, or even under educational support, it ties up in there somewhere or another, what does it look like? What are we doing? How many students are we producing in these areas? What is the goal for each year? Okay, because this should be about, I'm particularly thinking about Bergard, the amount of children that go through there. I'm seeing success now with the Northland Corridor. But I want to know if we are planning success, meaning that we have 50 students, we expect a 50% ratio, and blah, 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 blah. So I would like to see that in the future. But my next question is for Mrs. Kaplan. You said that you would like to do this program regionally. What does that mean, since Say Yes works with public and charter schools? What does regionally mean for that?
So that is still being explored. For my, and I hope I'm speaking correctly, because I'm not directly part of that process, but that's working with our national partners and funder to explore what is it like to bring youth apprenticeship to, say, Niagara Falls or Rochester or the Southern Tier. It doesn't necessarily mean that Say Yes would be the facilitator of that, but just how do we bring this greater movement to regions beyond the city of Buffalo? Because there are other regions very close to us who have similar needs and would benefit from this kind of movement. But as far as, I don't, none of the details of logistics have been decided upon or explored. It's really in the early stages of what is the need? Does this fit with what's going on there? What is the current landscape of apprenticeship work and workforce development in those areas to see what that would look like? So it's very early thought process, but that is something that is being explored.
Oh, I appreciate that. Thank you. Those are my questions. I appreciate your presentation. And I will be looking forward to additional information about our career technical educational programs in the future. Because I want to make sure that when I, people are coming, approaching me, I had a guy, a big wig, approach me at Wegmans on this topic in the fruit aisle, okay? So we had a conversation about this particular topic in Buffalo Public Schools. And I want to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our business partners. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Mr. Chair, I turn it back over.
Thank you, President Belton-Cotman. I just have a brief comment and want to say that the State Education Department recently concluded a study on multiple pathways to graduation. And I haven't had a chance to read the entire study, but I will be reading it soon. But I'm a huge proponent of, I think our students need multiple pathways. And I think what we've heard today, we are setting up our students to graduate with those different pathways, multiple different pathways. And I hope that state ed gets on board with endorsing a different graduation process so our students that have so many different talents can be recognized for it. And I think Mr. Hurd brings up a good point. We talk about how many students enter college, and I think it would be good to quantify and highlight how many of our students are entering a career and successful in a career. And just lastly, thank you to both of our presenters, Ms. Kaplan, Mr. Harris. I think, again, tonight, we see the value of our partnership with Say Yes Buffalo, how valuable it is to our students in this school district and community. And Mr. Harris, for all of your work over the years, it makes an incredible difference in the success of our students' education and obviously their future success. So thank you. Dr. Williams, any closing remarks?
Sure, just briefly. First, I want to say thank you to Rob Harris. He's a superstar, superstar. He has done good work for many years for the Buffalo Public Schools. And I want to thank Joanna Kaplan also for all of her work and with, you know, the work that Say Yes does for us. So I went to present a few months ago to the Buffalo Niagara Partnership. And, you know, it was a room full of business owners and stakeholders. And what they wanted to know, because diversity, equity, and inclusion only enhances the work that they're doing. And so they are looking to partner more with Buffalo Public Schools because they want diverse workforces. And so I know that there's this narrative that Buffalo Public School students graduate, and they can't read and they can't write. But when I hear that, you know, organizations like Tesla, Roswell Medical, Delaware North, Wegmans, National Grid are working with our students intentionally and deliberately recruiting our students and with this youth apprenticeship program where they work with that program, and then they make, starting $45,000 a year, I mean, I think it is incredible. And so I think we have to be the conduit to start changing that narrative. So, you know, as Mr. Harris was presenting, one of the things that I've started to do, I'm on my campaign, I'm on my campaign about the good things that happen in Buffalo Public Schools. And so I'm writing articles now every week for The Challenger and The Criterion, and I'm willing to write for whoever else. And so I've asked Rob Harris, when you look at your text message, you're going to see, I would like for us to write something up about, you know, the work that our vocational and our CTE programs are doing. So great job to both of you.
Just, so you know, Dr. Williams, I've been putting in our programs and the schools they're at and a QR code so they can directly link to our district in The Challenger at this point in time. And they're asking me to do something, to write something about the career tech ed programs. So we're, I've been working with you about that. I heard that in the back of your mind, so we're working on it, okay?
Awesome, awesome. On my bandwagon. All right, I don't have any more remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Very well said. And obviously, it means a lot to be lifting up this district and our students. So thank you for those efforts. All right, that concludes student achievement and our work sessions for the evening. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night. Check their email. There's an email coming from me. Please check it. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.